Good morning. I will call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners Meeting for Wednesday, January 29th.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
I am present, but I'm here on February 5th, not January 29th.
Just reading what's in front of me. It isn't.
Commissioner Dunn.
All present.
If you would please stand and join me for pledge allegiance for made standing for divocation by Reverend Leonard Chesbro New Life in Christ Church. I pledge allegiance-
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father God, we bow before you this hour. We thank you for this day. We thank you for every day you give us, Lord. We thank you for many blessings. Lord, I pray today for protection upon all of our people that serves us in the county, our sheriff's force, protect them, and our department, pray protection upon them, pray protection upon EMTs, and I pray protection upon each one, Lord, that goes out and... Just thank you for everything. We thank you for all of our county workers that work so diligently to keep this county running. I pray God for everything you do for us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
What's that? Correspondence and organizational business? None? Do we have a public comment today? All right. That brings us to our consent agenda, which today would include considering claim vouchers in the amount of $656,750.50, tax change orders in the amount of $42.91. Consider approving study session minutes for January 27th of 2020. Consider meeting minutes for January 29th, 2020. Consider approving payroll for the period of December 21, 2019, to January 20th, 2020. That amounts $1,255,256.77. And consider offering the 2020 dust control program and soliciting bids for the application of a magnesium chloride solution. That is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Our first item of business is consider awarding a covert bid to J&amp;J Drainage Products Company. David Lee, our Public Works Director, will go into details.
Commissioners, we use quite a few culverts last year and through the winter months, and so we need to replenish our stock. These pipes that we're asking to purchase should get us through hopefully most of the summer. And we solicited bids from three different companies, and you see the breakdown, J&amp;J Drainage Products was the low bid on all but the specialty pipe, and they missed it by just a few hundred dollars on that. So we're recommending purchasing the bulk of the pipes from J&amp;J Drainage and then the one specialty pipe from Wellburn Sales.
More questions for David? Pretty straightforward. Is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Just got one question for a vote. We need more pipes. Will they honor these same bid amounts?
I'm not sure we've asked them that question in the past. I would imagine that these prices would be good for a short period of time. Generally, there's a 30-day guarantee on the prices that they submit. But ordinarily, whenever we buy pipes on a singular basis, usually those are specialty pipes similar to the large one that we're ordering. You know, it's not common for us to order just a couple of the 15 by 30s, for instance. We typically order those in a grouping of larger quantities. So I would assume 30 days that these prices are good for, and then they would want the opportunity to price it again.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Our second item of business is a rezoning application. The rezoning application number 1912-1733 to rezone approximately 22.6 acres from an A2 Transitional Agricultural Zoning District to a Residential Estate Zoning District. Good morning, Larry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. You've indicated this is a request to rezone a block of 22 and 1/2 acre from the Transitional Agricultural Zoning District to the residential. First for this rezoning is to allow for the sale of the block 10 acres. The remainder of that would be retained with the existing residents and obstructions as you can see on the aerial photo that's attached as a part of your staff report. Planted Commission considered this in the meeting of January of this year, and after reviewing this, found that it did satisfy all of the criteria of the county's zoning regulations, subdivision regulations, as well as our comprehensive plan, and therefore have made a recommendation for the county commissioners to adopt a resolution approving the rezoning request to be zoned as 22 and 1/2 acre. Anything further to add? Unless any of you have...
Any questions for Larry on this?
Kind of splits the pond, but...
Well, the biggest pond is if it was difficult to divide this-
Pretty big.
-and still meet the lot frontage requirements that we have on our lot link-to-what requirements. So we don't like to see those go through ponds because there's always issues that arise on ownership and maintenance and we haven't seen any kind of... But they do happen from time to time.
Nothing else? Is there a motion to approve the rezoning application that's in front of us?
The motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
All right. That brings us to staff reports.
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about...I've got a few things. First, I want to talk a little bit about our communications director position. You all will recall that kind of the impetus behind creating that position was we felt like, you know, we had things in order. We were doing a lot of things pretty well. But one of the things maybe that we've struggled with at the county is promoting ourselves and getting the word out to your constituents about maybe some of the things that we're doing, what we're doing budget-wise, what we're doing service-wise. At the time we created the position, specifically, one of the driving forces was roads. We were getting a lot of feedback on the status of our roads. We had a bad weather year, and so what we've done and what Casey spent a lot of time doing, working with David, is enhancing communication to our people about road closures, the status of roads. We do a weekly road and bridge update, and it's going incredibly well. We've kind of been on a hot streak here where we've gotten consistent feedback from people, and I will tell you, rarely does it happen this way, but it's working exactly how we envisioned it. So people will reach out to Casey or to the county, either through the website or through social media, and they will have a complaint. Casey will reach back out to them. She will tell them that she'll reach out to David, and he will be in touch. Invariably, David gets in touch, and problem ends up getting solved. Casey reaches back out again to make sure the problem gets solved, and we've gotten a lot of fantastic feedback from that. Like, people...I did not think people would take the time to stop and give us thoughtful responses to that, but we're getting that. I mean, people are grateful. They're telling us they're grateful. And so when you think that we're just really scratching the surface on, not only on what we can do for public works, but also the entire organization, it's exciting. It's exciting, and I think it was a great move. Yesterday, Rick and I, as well as Casey, met with the Tourism Advisory Board, and I'll let Casey talk about that more. But suffice to say, I'm not sure I've ever felt as good about tourism as I do now, and I think that meeting with the Advisory Board needed to happen. I think they all feel a lot better about what our direction is at the county. I think they feel like they have a better understanding of what we want to utilize them for. I think they will be helpful in, you know, helping us move forward and ensure that those dollars are spent on purposes that are genuinely going to help attract more people to Franklin County. And then Crestview. We've talked about that facility, and I'm going to have Brandon come up here. We have...So there is a pipe that has burst over there, and it's going to be a fairly substantial cost to fix it because it's burst underneath the road, and so we're going to have to tear the road up. And what we're being told is that it could be anywhere from $10,000 to $25,000. Now, as you know, the Historical Society is over there, and I mean, it goes without saying that that's one of our most cherished tourist spots, so we could use these...I mean, we could use transient guest tax funds to perform this repair if need be. But my question is, do we want to discuss...do we want to put money into Crestview? Like, Crestview boards on the windows. Do we want to talk to Diana Dean about...are there other places potentially that we could, you know, help get her set up? I mean, is there anything that you want us to do? I mean, I can say yes now, and you can approve it, and we can make this fix, but that building is so far from anything that would be valuable to us in the long term.
Does that mean they're without water? Are they...
This is the fire line, so this is what runs the sprinkler system in that building. It's currently on right now. The city left it on for us, but it's leaking a little bit under the street, so still have water for washing hands and all of that.
Is that our responsibility or the city's line?
So it's our responsibility from the shut-off valve to the building, and the shut-off valve is just on the other side of the street, so...
On our side.
Have you thought of an alternative place?
We talked about some things at our study session, but is it something that we had, if we were going to fix it, we needed to fix it right away, or do we have some time to make some decision?
So we...right now, we have a little bit of time. If the leak gets much worse, then the city's going to go ahead and shut it off. We'll be without fire protection then in the building at that point, so we'll need to address something at that.
No, it's a conversation I can have with Diana Dean and see if, you know...I mean, I don't know. I cannot imagine that she's in love with that space, but I don't want to speak for her because I don't know that. But certainly, I could have a conversation with her and see, are you...you know, I don't know what kind of space in the old Depot Museum. I know we have space in the Visitor's Center. I don't know what other opportunities may be there. I don't know how much they have stored in that facility. And what I also don't know is, we know we're storing records for other organizations. Do...if you're just storing documentation, do you need fire protection? So if you don't have occupants there that work out of there, is it...would it be a code violation? If it was just document storage, do you have to have an active fire suppression line? I mean, these are all questions I don't have answers to, but if there's no desire on the board's part to even contemplate this, then, you know, we'll just have it fixed and we'll punt this for another day. Crestview's not going to get any nicer. I mean, you're going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into that facility to make it something that we're proud of, and obviously, it wouldn't make financial sense to do that.
And it's never going to be anything but a storage facility. I mean, that's the most we're ever...even putting quite a bit of money into it, it's not going to be something we're going to...we'd have to sink, like you said, a lot of money to look at offices or anything like that. It's basically going to be a storage facility.
Is they...do they have fire protection in that building they built out back, or do you know?
I don't know for sure. I don't think so, but I don't know for sure.
I've been in there, but I've never noticed whether something ever came up.
Yeah, I've never looked around in there. No, that when we do our sprinkler testing, they don't go in that building at all, so I don't...I don't...
I think the building's a blight. I mean, it's the end of its life personally. I would be looking for alternatives at this point. I don't see sinking any more money in that facility as being a good idea, but...anyone else?
Like I said, I'd go ahead and talk with her. If we don't need the fire protection for that, we could shut that down and use it for a while and look at some other options, but...
I mean, obviously, I don't want to keep occupants in there if...without fire protection, but I don't know that. I feel pretty good. I don't know how many people. I know Diana's over there. I don't know who else is, but I'm pretty confident we could find space for the people that work out of that building. I think it might get a little trickier when it comes to the documentation, but again, do we have to do anything with that in the short term? And my hope would be that the answer is no, but I don't know when I'll look into that, so...
In this day and age, people are digitalizing their documents. Is that, you know, then would you seem like you're...
Yeah, and I think a lot of people are. I know, and we talked with Dustin about that all the time during budget, because I know like the CA's office wants to do that more and more, and it is pricey. So I think that is the impediment that a lot of people have, is it just costs money to go digital. But yeah, I think we'll see that people are increasingly doing so, and...
While tourism's fresh on our mind, let's go to Casey. Thank you, Brandon.
Before we transition-
Oh, sorry if you had...
That's fine. I just want to make sure that we're...I mean, I think the two of you, Colt and Rick, you two were pretty clear. Are the five of you in favor, or at least three of you in favor of me exploring what our options are?
Oh, oh, yeah.
I think before we make a decision of that kind of magnitude of money out, yes.
We're scheduled to have a study session on Monday, so I'll certainly have some conversations before then, and we could have this up as an item for further discussion Monday, potentially, so...
And would Diane be at that study session?
Sure.
I mean, that's the prime figure out what they do and can't do, and what they would need to do. We probably don't know totally what would be...what you could do with or without, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yep, I agree.
Did all those records from the attic of the courthouse go out there to Crestview?
I don't...I know we store some documentation out there. I mean, I know we have a lot of people that, you know, because that's one of the things you can say about Crestview, is that there are a lot of individual rooms that provide individual spaces that can be locked up. So at least in that regard, it's handy for document storage, but I don't know if we move the attic stuff out there.
I think we'd look for something else.
Thank you, Brandon.
So as Derek mentioned, I think the tourism meeting went exceptionally well, and 2020 really is going to be an evaluation year for us.
Might turn that mic for him.
Yeah.
Sorry. Is that better?
Yeah.
2020 is going to be an evaluation year for us for tourism. We did revamp the sponsorship program, so that's going to have two different application windows so that we don't get like one-off requests in the middle of the year. So the first application window is open now until March 1st, and then the second window will open up in July. So the first year, it's a learning year. If something comes in, you know, we'll probably consider it, but for the most part, we'll try to save anything after March 1 to evaluate in July for funding. And then we haven't really set a cap on what, how, like, the dollars that we'll use for that, for those requests. We kind of want to see what comes in and evaluate how our dollars can be useful. And then also, in January, we started tracking and trending when visitors are coming to the Visitors Information Center, time of day, because we can still be a Level 1 designated center and cut our hours out there, and I think it's something that could definitely be useful, save a little bit on utilities and reallocate that money to help programs and events in the county. So we've started doing that. We averaged four people a day in January, but it was loud and clear like Sundays. We had only four people the entire month of January on a Sunday. So that's my first day to look at cutting hours, and we don't have to be open both weekend days. So any questions about tourism? That's really the gist of...
You talking Sundays year-round?
We'll look at it. I know summertime's going to be a little bit different. So like I said, this year's really an evaluation year, but for...to be a Level 1 designated center, you only have to be open five days a week. One of those five days needs to be a weekend days and six hours a day, so...
The only comment I make is probably the one Sunday, and it's one Sunday a year, I say it, but that's probably the busiest day in the whole year for that visitor center is the weekend of the car show, and they do registrations out there.
Well, I think that obviously, like, if we were going to shut down Sundays, there's going to be like Tractor Show Sunday, Car Show Sunday. If any of those need to be open, that's not an issue. I just think in general, Sunday's a very slow day and probably not worth our time.
I doubt...I'm not downgrading, but because the Tractor Show don't use it for...
Use it for registration. I get it.
This does, so...
Yeah. Yep.
It'd still be available if...
Yeah, for special events.
Absolutely. That's all I got.
One other thing, Casey. I talked to Fred Wingert yesterday about the signage on I-35, and he said it's been about five years since that's been upgraded.
Yep. Sorry, I didn't bring that up. That's actually one of our first initiatives, is to reface those signs, and we talked about some different ideas. Obviously, trail is top of mind, and so we are getting to work on some different design options, and that will be...and the group talked about, you know, that's probably one of the best uses of our advertising dollars is those I-35 signs. So we are going to get those refaced, and they'll be looking much better for 2020. Anything else?
I was pleased with...I don't know. I was just...I was pleased with the feedback that we got from the Advisory Board. They...you know, we had a candid discussion with them about the Visitors Center. Do you all, because they are the...I mean, they're the people that have put money into this community. They own businesses in this community, or they've dedicated their careers to this community. Do you think that that Visitors Center increases tourism in Franklin County? Like, does that building lead to increased TGT receipts? Does it enhance the quality of life? I mean, because those are the difficult questions we have to ask, and those are going to be difficult discussions. And I think the answer in that room was pretty unanimous. I mean, I think people understand that we live in a different time now. It's just a different world than it was from when that was built. I feel like all of them had...you know, we talked about how we...it is going to be our focus to make sure that those dollars get spent on events that draw tourists or enhance quality of life, and transparency is going to be absolutely critical. Like, I want to work with vendor, you know, the actual vendors of the event. I want the transient guest tax, or at least my recommendation will be that it go from this board to the actual vendor, not through another organization in the community, from you to the vendor. That way, we can ensure that those dollars aren't padding budgets. Those dollars are being used on tourist attractions, and so...and I think they were all like...I just...I don't know. I just think it was a really good meeting, so they all seemed to be on board with that. They...so, yeah. I'll be anxious to hear your thoughts on it, Rick, but...
It's like there've been a bird sitting there listening to it, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. I mean, you guys pretty much have covered it. Get to my part, I don't really have too much to add to it. Like you said, both of you covered it well. It was a good meeting. I think everybody understands. One thing about that building out there I will put in there. A lot of people talk about how nice the building is, and it is, but the location and...they're not coming in off the interstate a lot and driving by that building, and I think a lot of people understand that back when that was put up and a lot of things, the thought was that auto would grow to the north, and all the...it would be in a perfect spot when all the growth happened north, and it didn't really grow to the north. It's growing to the south, and that building's kind of sitting out there, and it's like Casey talked about, the amount of people coming through there is not very many, and closing it a couple days a week is not going to hurt anything at all. But anyway, like I said, I don't really have much input. I agree with you. It was a good meeting. It's a pretty good board, and I think now that they kind of got some direction on what they're expecting of them, it'll be better.
Thank you.
Larry, you have anything else?
One matter, I guess, that I could just...informational, basically. I did receive a call yesterday from a retired former director of the KDOT salvage control unit, Marvin Newkirk, and he informed me that the salvage operation on I-35 just east of Wellsville was purchased by KDOT, so that they will be eventually cleaning that up. I think that was good news. The bad news was that they have...at least their attorney has advised me that they have two years to get it cleaned up and accepted then by the state. So that's another issue that we may have to be concerned with. But over the years, this has generated numerous phone calls for our office. It's not located in our county. It's adjacent to the county, but it's not in Franklin County. However, I was involved with this back a number of years ago when I was the planning director at Miami County, and that was the first time I ever had to respond to the governor's office regarding a complaint that the county needed to do something to get that thing cleaned up, although it was licensed by the state and not the county. So anyhow, I wanted to let you know that the state has purchased that site, and there will be some effort, I think, in the next coming months to start the cleanup on it.
So Larry's concern, which I share, is the current owner of that site owns property in Franklin County, and there's some concern that the-
Salvage operation-
The salvage operation will move from the site that is currently in Miami County to a site that is in our county, and the question is, what can we do, if anything, to keep that from happening? And so that is something certainly that we're going to have our eyes on very closely, so...
Each time that something has put a little pressure on that facility, we have had repercussions of that coming over into Franklin County. In fact, we did have a suit that we pursued through the district court for cleanup on that existing site. It's about 23 acres. It's located east of the...on Thomas Road, east of the new elementary school, just north of the Wellsville Cemetery, and we've had issues with a lot of materials being stored on that site in the past, and I have this- I have this sinking feeling sometimes that if it being required to be removed from the existing site, that we may see something happen here. But anyway, that being said, at least the good news is that the state is in making some progress on attempting to get that facility removed.
Brandon, anything else?
Just wanted to give you a quick update on a few things we've got going right now. Going to be, should have it ready to go today or tomorrow. Get an RFP ready to send out for the carpet replacement in the hallways here in this building as well as the walls painted in the hallways and this room as well. Also getting ready to get an RFP put out for the remodel for suite one and two. I just need a finalized drawing from the architect that put together what we're looking at for that and as soon as I have that, I'll have that ready to go. And then next week, should have something in front of you to approve soliciting bids for the slurry coat for the parking lot here at the annex. That'll be scheduled sometime in the spring and we can get that knocked out as well. Think over the weekend or late last week, the roofers finished up the roof on the visitor's center. So that building is got a brand new roof and should last us a while. And then we also, I'm working with Latimer Summers right now on the district court HVAC project, trying to get some budget costs kind of nailed down with that. The price that they gave me the other day was about $100,000 more than we had initially talked about and planned for. So I'm talking with them, trying to figure out how we can bring that down, if that's phasing in, you know, different aspects of this down the road instead of doing it all at one time or however we need to, we need to do that. But I'll have more information for you on that.
That's their, their fees or that's the project estimate?
That's the project estimate and I think their, their fees are included in that. So that's the whole project cost is they're saying. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, Brandon. Sheriff?
I told you in the past that the, in Kansas, we now have a jail training academy that happens out at KLET C. And that's going on again this week and we do have two more of our staff members that are attending that academy. So this is the third, the third academy class that we have had and we've had two, two people in each of those classes so far. So with our goal to be that we're going to get all of our, all of our jail staff through through that training academy and get certified as national, nationally certified corrections officers. So that's our goal. It's not a requirement by the state, but I do believe that the professional development of our staff is, is a high priority. And so that's, this is one way that we are, that we are doing that. So we are excited about that. We've already heard good feedback from the two that are out there. Every time that we send people, they tell us, hey, we have a list of things that we, that we want to look at and ideas that we have and that's, that's what we're going for. And so this time they didn't wait to come back with that. They've already been calling, telling us that they've got some ideas. So, so we are excited about that. We, we have, I've also talked in the past about, we have a focus that we're trying to do what's called resiliency, but taking care of our, of our staff because of the stresses of law enforcement and just government work in general. And one of the ways that we're doing that is Financial Peace University. And tonight is the, will be our third session with that. We have 18 people going through, going through that class and Dave Clayton, math teacher down at Central Heights is facilitating that for us. It's a good program to get people looking at money management and personal finances and not just retirement and investing, but that is definitely an aspect of it. So as we tell our people all the time, the big thing with, with your income is not how much you make, it's how much of it you get to keep. And so this is a way to get them to, to learn how to, how to manage that properly. So we believe that that is going to, going to be good for them individually and then also that's going to be a benefit to our organization to have people that are, that are more solid. So we have 76 inmates is our count right now. 70 of those are in-house. As you know, our actual capacity is 64. So we're still over, we do have some people, we do have six that are farmed outside of our facility. We do have some that are planned, that are scheduled to be getting out this week, which is why we don't have any more farmed out. But I'm just, just to update as to where we are, we're consistently having people farmed out right now for a variety of reasons. So other than that, if you have any questions for me, I'd happy to answer.
Jeff, I saw that Douglas County recently passed their jail expansion. Is this, I mean, are these issues that counties are having all over the state or is it this area or?
The, it is pretty much a state, statewide thing. There are some, we've just recently went through a survey with all the sheriffs on jail status and, and capacity and several things like that. There are a few counties where their jails, because of a lack of maintenance and funding throughout the years, their jails have been shut down, which helps create other problems. There are a few jails, a few counties that have built and they built with the future in mind and they built them large enough, knowing that people were having problems with capacity so that they are housing for other, for other counties. Chase County comes to mind, they're the most recent that we've signed a contract with. They built a jail much larger than they knew they would need and they're having basically other counties pay for, pay that off for them because they built it for, for that purpose. Lynn County is, is, is in the middle of a project right now as well and they're close to us. As far as expansions go for us, as you know, a couple of years ago, the board approved to do an, the, I guess, a reutilization inside of our facility. So we have, we, I believe we have used every aspect of that and made every jail cell possible that we can with our current footprint. So when you look at jail feasibility studies, which, which I have done one through National Institute of Corrections, basically it says if you're at 80% capacity for over a year, then you need to start looking at either expansion or building. We've looked at our expansion, that was part of that. I think that we're at, we've done what we can there. But it, it is a statewide thing and not just within the state of Kansas, but other states as well. The state has actually done so up at, up at Lansing as well. They just had to redo a bunch of, they redid several, a new building up there as well. So it, it's even a state concern, so.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing.
David?
Hey, commissioners, you know, this weather is kind of hard to predict. We sent our night crew home earlier this morning in anticipation of the one to four inches of snow that they were predicting earlier. That we could get up to four inches, we could get nothing. So, but we're out, we've got folks out working on our hills, curves, bridges and intersections right now and getting them pre-treated in anticipation of that. We also have folks that are out working on bridge washout issues. We worked on Virginia Terrace north of Douglas and a couple of washouts near the intersection of Virginia Terrace and Butler Terrace yesterday. Today, we're hoping to work on Pawnee east of Louisiana and Georgia north of Kingman. Those, all of those structures in those areas have, have some areas that need to be material added and kind of packed in there. So that's kind of what we're working on. The, the weather up until Saturday was, has been horrible, but we did manage to get Rock Hall to a number of, number of locations in four of the districts to help take care of the worst of the, of the worst. And then Monday was a beautiful day and our blade operators worked a little extra and really took care of some of their bad spots as well. So we'll, we'll keep after that and, and keep making improvements. We also, on Monday, we had five crews out patching potholes on our blocktop roads and they'll be doing a little bit more of that today as well in our subdivision. So this time of year, that's an ongoing, an ongoing battle that, that we'll keep fighting. Also yesterday, we got a call from the Roema Baptist Church, they're having a funeral today. So we shaped up the roads and, and made those improvements around that church yesterday to, to help with that process also. And then Friday, we had the final walkthrough on the Pawnee Road Bridge. And then Monday, the, the bridge crew, bridge company got all the, there were a few minor punch list items, they got those knocked out. And so we've opened that road back up and it's, it's a heck of a structure. It's really happy with it. The, the roads leading into it are a little, little soft yet, but we'll take care of all those things. But we've got a, a structure there that'll last quite a long time. So that's something to be proud of. The dust control that, that you all approved just a little bit ago, we will start advertising that immediately and we will send out, we'll contact some companies to get bids on that and we'll hopefully first of April, we'll have the, the bids back and we'll, if all goes right, be applying the dust control measures first of May.
Janet?
Just one thing, I'd like to encourage you guys to stay engaged and, and read about the tax bill that's being proposed. I know we briefly talked about it at the, at the retreat study session, but that is really up and going. It's going to get a hearing on Friday. It was supposed to get its hearing today, but because the legislature has canceled for the celebration, Kansas City, they're going to move the hearing to Friday. There was a fiscal note put out on that yesterday where the state will actually have to hire some part-time FTEs to fill the requirements of that. And in order to fill the, fill that money void, they're going to charge every taxing entity in the state that receives at least $5,000 a $30 fee annually to meet the requirements of that bill, which is a very nominal fee, but I mean, when you're talking about these, all these small districts and them having to remit that to the state, that seems like a lot of work, not to mention all of the requirements. And I'd just like to throw that out to you guys that if we as a county need to raise even one tax dollar more than we received in the prior year, we would have to send a mailing out to every single one of our property owners, which Jamie and I kind of did the math on, postage alone would be over $7,000 on that. And I've been engaged with many other counties and most counties are estimating that to be $1 per property. And we have just slightly over 14,000 real properties in our county. So a mailing for us to raise even $1 more property taxes for, that'd be for law enforcement, for EMS, any of the things that are exempt right now under the current tax lid. We don't have any give for CPI or anything like that that we currently have. If we want to raise $1 more than we received the previous year, then we would have to spend $14,000 to send out that mailer, mailing in addition to an additional publication in the newspaper that could cost us, you know, another couple hundred dollars to publish that in the newspaper. And then you would have to include an additional item on your agenda at your public hearing that we're already basically doing. So I'd just encourage you guys to read that, stay engaged. I've tried to have some conversations with our senator who is putting that bill forward. There's a number of them that are, that are pushing this item. Can tell you the KAC is opposed to it, the League of Municipalities is opposed to it, the Riley County Commissioners have sent collective testimony from their board of commissioners in opposition of it, in addition to the Clerks Association and many individual clerks and tax representatives, so.
Will you be going to JPC on Friday?
I'm not thinking about that right now. I know there's a lot of other clerks that are going for our association and we're all planning to send testimony for that. So we're trying to get that all together and engage, of course, you know, our state senator is one of the, well, she is the leader of the Senate Tax Committee and she's the number one listed on, on this bill. So just trying to engage with her on, on this and let her know where, where we stand on it. I mean, I would definitely accept any feedback from you guys to, to include in any conversations that I have with her. But it, like I said, it is a very lengthy process, very time consuming. One, one more note just specific to my position is that any correspondence that goes out in regards to this bill has to come from the county clerk's office. So any taxing entity in our county, whether that be us or a city or a cemetery or fire district, those letters all have to be mailed out from my office. So that puts an extreme burden on my office between July and August, which as you guys know, is early voting time too, which is a lot of pressure on our office anyways, but we plan for that. But this would be something additional that we do not really have staffing for in the July and August timeframe, in addition to preparing all of their budgets and submitting all the additional reports to the state that will be required due to this bill in the July and August timeframe.
Gina, my understanding of the bill is that we would have to hold a public hearing for each individual property that has sustained an increase in value. Is that correct?
We, well, each individual taxing district and they can't overlap at all. You can't have two taxing districts that have a hearing at the same time. So whereas the city of Ottawa and Franklin County generally hold ours on the same night, they would have to be a substantial distance apart and that would fall on the county clerk's office to schedule all of those and make sure that there is no conflicts in those hearing dates, which would again be another difficult task of, because we don't always know, we, it's hard to know what districts are overlapping with each other. But the list of requirements that are required in the notice to every single taxpayer does include the dollar amount that their property tax bill would go up and various other things that we require specialty programming for our computer software. And some counties are estimating that it could cost up to $14,000 to get their software vendor to program these changes so that we can generate the letters. We don't have any way to generate the letters right now. I've been literally racking my brain for two days on how we could generate these letters that are required and there is just no way to compile all of the information right now and get that information all out to our taxpayers.
Clerk's offices are just expected to absorb.
Absolutely.
All of this and just, just do it.
Yep. Yeah. So, and I will say, this tax committee has, to my knowledge, has had no communication with my association and I am very actively involved in my association. We've had no conversations to ask if we can do this, what this will mean for us or anything. Like I said, my association is very adamantly against this due to all of the additional pressure that it will put on us on scheduling and budgets. Most county clerks, as do I, I, no additional charge to every taxing entity in the county with the exception of school districts and, and cities. So every cemetery district, fire district, all those, I do their budgets for free for them. So I sit down with them and fill out all their state budget worksheets and make sure that they are compliant. We do their annual reports every year and input all that information. So I do that for free for them. They do not have the knowledge to, to complete a state budget. And so that is going to fall on us to complete all those additional reports that budgets and reports is going to require from them, all the computations that are going to be required for this bill to, to get their certified tax rate. So.
I think what is frustrating is, is the bill is designed.
I think what is frustrating is, is the bill is designed to increase transparency. And I question whether it's a transparency problem we have or an understanding problem because I, I don't see there being a lack of transparency. I, we live in an area of the state, given our proximity to the greater Kansas City area where our property values are going up. Like our county appraiser doesn't sit in his office thinking, hmm, how much do I want to raise property taxes this year? Let's go 8.5%. That's not how it works. He has to maintain statistical compliance with the state. He has to. And you achieve statistical compliance by appraising, by setting values that are commensurate with the sales prices of other similar properties in your community. So he's literally looking at what properties sell for and he is valuing similar properties similar to that sales price. Like that's, and if he doesn't do that, if he says, well, I don't, I don't want to raise values by 8.5%, even though houses are selling by 8.5% more, then he doesn't stay in statistical compliance and he doesn't stay in appraiser. And so it's frustrating that, you know, local governments aren't just sitting here making decisions on a whim about how we want to tax our constituents. Like this is, Franklin County is an area that is growing and, and as Kansas City continues to creep south, we're going to continue to grow. There are a ton of counties in this state where growth is not happening and property taxes and values stay flat, they stay stagnant. I mean, that is an, an option for people if, but I, I struggle with the transparency part because our, our appraiser's office doesn't, I mean, they will walk you through how it works. I, I don't see there being a lack of transparency.
I have just a couple more points I'd like to make on this. Number one is that they're not going to remove the tax lid on us. So in addition to all of these additional rules that they're putting out on us, we still have to fill out all of the tax lid documents and stay compliant with the tax lid, which these are not the same thing and they do not mean the same thing. So that it will make the budget process very difficult for the, however many years they decide to continue the tax lid in addition to this additional process. Also, I would like to just point out, just one scenario that our appraiser Jamie and I have talked about, we have an industrial building right now in, in our industrial park on the north side of Ottawa that is currently on the tax rolls. But we are, I'm sure actively looking for a tenant for that building. So we are receiving tax benefit from that building right now. So if that tax, if that building that's being taxed right now gets a new tenant and we approve an abatement for it, then that building goes off the tax rolls. Then that taxing, any, any taxing, any part that's in that taxing entity, like the city of Ottawa or us, we lose that value. And then that pressure to raise those taxes go to the other people who are in that taxing unit. So this does not guarantee that your taxes will not go up. This is not a guarantee. They have not taken any considerations for what abatements and additions to the tax rolls mean in this situation. And that is a huge concern for me because we are actively trying to get new businesses and new construction in this, in this area. We have housing developments that are going in and I can tell you, I know that the city of Ottawa relies on the additional tax revenue they get from housing developments to fund the roads, the sewer, the water that goes into those areas. And they will not, according to this law, be able to, to raise any additional tax revenue from new houses going in. If they collect $1 million this year for their, for their taxes, they cannot collect $1,001,000 next year or any year after that. They just have to continue collecting $1 million each year. And everyone knows, especially because of our pay plan and we are trying to take care of our employees, it costs us additional money each year to be able to fund our employee pay plan and we want to keep good employees. I know David does, I know I do. And if, if we are not allowed to move even $1, we cannot continue to fund these things. That is why we are growing our economy. That's why we have Paul actively searching for new businesses and, and finding new ways to bring people into our community because we want to grow our tax base to give our taxpayers a break. And that's what you have to do. You don't put an artificial lid on tax dollars that are raised in, either by the tax lid or by this tax bill. Off my soapbox.
It's not the same as the tax lid, but the senator that's behind it, I've heard her talk, I mean, it's sold in the same way. I'm going to keep those dang dirty politicians from raising your taxes and this is how. We've seen it with the tax lid here and for years before, we saw it in Colorado with their Tabor, their taxpayer bill of rights. It makes changing taxes going down impossible and very unpopular because you can't get it back. It ratchets you down. So, you know, if you have a capital need now, it's paid off, that debt goes away instead of giving that money back to the taxpayers like you'd be inclined to.
Yep.
Entities save that money for the next capital need that may not be for a few years. So there's a frustrating thing in Kansas as a state, has the sixth most taxing districts of any state in the nation. So, I mean, we feel that impact more than, more than the average state.
Like Derek said, we are absolutely in favor of transparency. We move our budget hearing to the evening every year rather than have it at this regularly scheduled meeting during the day. So if anyone wants to come to that, they can. They're getting their notice in March of their value. And, and then they have any opportunity, if they don't see it in the newspaper in the July, August timeframe, they're always welcome to come into my office and take a look at any proposed budget that any taxing entity is, is, has prepared and find out when their hearing is and go and see that. I always try to encourage people to do that. That's probably something I'll work with Casey on getting that information out so that people can come in and see those budgets. We always encourage transparency. I, I don't think we need to do this to become more transparent.
Mr.'s comments and board reports.
This deal here is, you know, I just kind of, I know we don't need to talk to every John Henry that there is out there, but this is just brings me back to my thought that somebody like is promoting this and our representative should be right there at that podium and physically on the camera and give everybody in Franklin County a good explanation to why they feel they're doing the right thing and we're doing, we're not doing the wrong thing, but, but we got to live with what, what they do and make, it actually end up costing our taxpayers more money than, than the other way around and maybe another employee and maybe, you know, tons of more stuff. I'll, I'll let that one go. Anyhow, I did attend a rental meeting the other night. They, the water issues they're dealing with, they did work with their pathways grant and they adopted a smoke-free park as part of their deal with the grant down there. They did have quite a long session with the Richmond mayor was there and discussing, and they had their codes officer that Richmond has now. And they're trying to give them more information. I'm not all cities, but I know they're, they're through a tool about how they come to that point and what they're doing and give them all their documents and so forth, how they did it, why they did it and is it working for them. And they had their codes officer there explaining to them what he does, what his job is, what he charges, what it pertains to. And it was pretty good information to, for, I know there's still a lot of confusion because it's a, it's a big deal, you know? You know, where you don't have a, that type of organization set up and then you're thinking about doing it, you know? And I know they did change, I don't know the whole thing, but I know it is different than what they started out talking about. I know somehow it would be tied to the Ottawa Municipal Court rather than their own individual judge in the contract with the city. I don't claim to know all the answers to that one, so. Do you know more than on, on that than just what I kind of said is kind of just out there right now? I appreciate, I thought yesterday our solar energy deal was, might be a bust because there's a lot of things canceled yesterday because of bad weather and so forth, but it really turned out really good. We ended up having 51 people here. Just to give you an idea of the, the types of people that were here, there was 10 county commissioners here from five different counties. We had two planning directors here. We had two public works directors here from different counties. We had four people here that, from our planning board that just wanted to hear more and I can't answer if there was others here from other, I know there was four of ours here. And we had the regional director from Farm Bureau was here. They're very interested in what's happening and what's going on in solar energy with farmland and so forth. And he just happened to be a county commissioner also, so, Mr. Press from Miami County. And I thought it went really good, had good feedback to it. And we did make, Dustin was really great about, he, we did it from the podium up here. So there is a CD available to, I can help him, you know, and to Dustin. If there's a, a community or somebody that couldn't attend, it would be more interesting, there would be a CD of, of that, that meeting, not the whole group, but just her presentation and so forth. So then we had our RCND meeting afterwards and I had a lot of good discussion there about different grants and stuff we're working with. Project 17, I know they have a new, they're working on getting a new coordinator. They give me, the commerce department put me in touch with the president of that association. So we'll be working with them. I know we did a grant with them last year, a hundred thousand dollar grant a year before us and, and CCAN, RCND, and we're working with them to find out more about where they're headed. And like I said, we just talked about a lot of different things that we're working in the process. Oh, another, and we're working with Amazon Smile Organization, the Amazon, there's a statewide deal and there's, I didn't realize, there's a lot of nonprofits and so forth that can, if you're an Amazon user, you can actually, if your comp, your nonprofit gets approved by Amazon to use it, you can have dedicated like a half a percent of everything that you spend can go to that organization. I know it doesn't sound like a ton, but neither's interest on your CD at the bank either, so, you know, so, and you know, so I think it's a good deal. So we're working on several other statewide grants that we'll talk about later on. That's it.
Okay, well, yesterday I attended the, or the tourism board meeting, which we pretty much covered all that. So go on from that. Monday, went to Williamsburg City Council meeting. I left my agenda out in the car, but they appointed a new commissioner to that council, Leon Williman. They had an open spot and they appointed him to fill that spot. They also appointed a new library board member. They talked about the census and that'll be going through their library. They'll be there to help people and with that, if they want to come to the library. They're getting some training for the people at the library on that. They'll be working through there. Casey has the name of the, the person there that's going to be doing that, so she's going to reach out to them. They talked about new software that they're getting and there's a lot of it. The, probably the most exciting thing at their meeting, this is early stages, so we won't go into it a lot, but there is a company that's looking to possibly come to Williamsburg. And there was two members, they're not the primary owners, but they're two part owners of this company that's talking to the Williamsburg. Derek and Paul both are aware of this and have been involved in this somewhat. But anyway, they were there and they answered some questions, visited with them. The interesting thing is both these guys have a $50 million company right now in Kansas City's and they both seemed very excited about the idea of being out here. The primary owner was not there. They said he had the flu and was unable to attend, but he has purchased 300 acres outside of Williamsburg and he's in the process of trying to purchase another 100 and, they said 105. And some of this would be in the city of Williamsburg, some of it would be in the county if it happened. And anyway, the landowner that they're trying to purchase this from came by my house yesterday and we visited and he's, says he sees no reason this isn't going to happen. He thinks that it's not going to be a problem on the purchase of the land. So like I said, it's early stages and hopefully down the road, they have a company right now of this same type in St. Paul and seems to be doing well. Their initial talk is possibly employing 20 to 25 people if it happens. And it appears that everybody's pretty much on board with this and like I said, it's, it's early, so don't want to predict anything, but hopefully it does happen. It would be good for, for Williamsburg and, and the county. So we'll see what happens down the road. The only other thing, last week, I and I and Derek and some other county people attended a meeting with Southern Star Gas. There was three of their representatives were here. They have a, two gas lines that run from Welda to Ottawa and they're going to replace those two lines with one larger line later on in the year. I believe wasn't it 180 million, they said, the project, something like that. It was a pretty, pretty good sized project. And they were just talking to us and filling us in on about that and they had some numbers that they think will help our economy. I don't know where they got those numbers, but hopefully, hopefully they're right on those numbers because it was definitely going to help out the economy. But anyway, that's going to happen later on and replace that line with a, one, one big line. So that's pretty much all I've been to since the last time.
I had to go to that pipeline meeting and I would just add one thing that, it just sounded that they're going to be good partners to the county. They've been diligent in getting all their permits and all their right of ways. I guess what we would ask you to do is, I mean, and those pipes are going to be here, they're actually on their way by barge and they will be here probably in another week or two and they will start this project. So you'll be seeing large pieces of pipe, 70 to 80 feet. So when you see those, that's what that is. But be our eyes in the county. So if you see, I mean, our roads are stressed. If you see something that you feel is a problem, please get hold of us to let us know if you feel like there might be a, a problem in that area. Then Friday, I went to the Chamber of Coffee for Sprint. They are out here by the bank and they have some new management that seem like that they're really customer service oriented. In fact, they have a couple of classes a month for people that are not smartphone savvy, which wouldn't be a bad idea for some people I know personally to take. Saturday, I went to the chili kickoff at the LOH Fire Department, which was a nice, great group of people to meet. Monday, I went to the food council meeting, the first one, and they have in January served meals, individual meals, 524 individual meals. They serve them throughout the county to people that maybe are just having a tough time. We, we encourage them not to get it every week, but you know, if it's, if it's a time that they feel like they could use some extra help. Monday night, I went to the city of Princeton County City Meeting and they're doing a lot of cleanup. They're still working on trying to get their playground finished and to raise funds, they might, they might be considering having a Texas Hold'em turnip, which would be kind of, so you might be looking for that. And they're still working on getting their regulations changed for the codes enforcement officer. I did go to the meeting yesterday for the solar energy and a lot of that information I feel like we've already had, but one of the things that kind of stood out to me is that, where she said that, that they are going to go to counties that already are set up for solar energy. And so if your county has not passed those regulations, then they probably will miss out and it might be a great opportunity for your county. But if you haven't moved ahead like we have, then they might be missing out on an opportunity. And then the last thing, Sunday, what a great day. First of all, it was Groundhog Day. We are going to have an early spring. I'm not sure I believe all that, but we will take all the good news that we can get. And then, way to go Chiefs.
Roy?
Yeah, I went to the Lake Region RCND meeting yesterday. First part was the solar energy presentation. And like Don said, it was a real good turnout for solar energy. Other counties are looking at maybe developing similar regulations that, that Larry and his staff and the Planning Commission came up with for us. and the Planning Commission came up with for us. So it's being talked up and just like Ian said, there's counties that aren't interested in doing anything and according to the solar people, they said they're not going to be looking at those counties to come in and develop something unless they do have some kind of regulations already established. And we had a regular meeting, Don talked a little bit about that, but he's reluctant to pat himself on the back and he really needs to be patted on the back about the bike, bike program. Another load of bikes is going out to Ellsworth here on the 24th of April and, and we voted to give Ellsworth $100, just, just to help them out there repair these bikes and, and the organization's received almost $4,000 in contributions to help with the bike program and, and this program's about, for anybody in the area that has some sort of bike, like rodeo or something like that planned, that this bike program will, will offer safety, you know, provide safety equipment or stuff like that for these programs that people are putting on for bike safety and, and Don is working hard with this program, has been doing it for several years now, so he's, needs to be committed on all his work on that. Also feeding the hungry, 3,600 pounds of innocent burgers went out to various organizations in the area this last year for that program. So that's a successful program too. And lastly, Don had mentioned that the Ran Tool Parks and Recreation are trying to raise funds to improve their bathroom facilities there. Maybe a 25, $30,000 project and, and we're looking, RC&amp;D is looking to help them with maybe seed money to get other donations involved in improving their parks and recreation program. And that's about all I have.
The economic development meeting was canceled yesterday. It was going to be Hilton Wellsville, but because of the weather, that was called off. So other than that, I have nothing to add. Anyone else before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?